I mean, they'll be clear past Pine Lake Road.
Ready.
I know. It looks like we're ready to roll.
Oh.
Dick, I can't answer. Have you been to the new chocolate shop over in your neck of the woods?
Uh huh.
She's a friend of mine. That is her chocolate.
Yeah.
I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the Lincoln Lancaster County Planning Commission of January 6th, 2021. A printed agenda is available outside the hearing room, and a copy of the full agenda, including the staff reports, is available at the front of the chambers with the clerk. The Open Meetings Act is posted just inside the doors at the back of the room. In order to meet the social distancing, the required social distancing protocols, we must limit the number of people inside the chambers. Therefore, no more than 10 individuals will be allowed in the chambers at once, excluding Planning Commission members and staff. Staff is assisting individuals who are present and wish to testify on items on today's agenda by ensuring that each person has signed in. Staff will direct you into the chambers based on what items you are testifying on and your position on that item. Once you have testified, you should exit the chambers using the doors to the right of the desk, and then the next individual will be directed in. Interested parties can observe the meeting on the monitors located outside the chambers. Based on estimations, we are staggering the times of various hearings over several hours. These times are identified in parentheses on the agenda. We are encouraging attendees to arrive no more than 15 minutes before their scheduled hearing. Please note that an agenda item will not begin before the time posted. In the event that the allocated hearing times go quicker than estimated, there will be breaks in the hearing. Please note that the application for Comprehensive Plan Conformance 20018, the Proposed 1645 Washington Street Redevelopment Project, which is an amendment to the South of Downtown Redevelopment Plan, is not part of this agenda and is scheduled before the Planning Commission on January 20th, 2021. If you parked in the parking garage across the street to the north, the gate is open and no parking coupons are needed. Out of courtesy for those attending this meeting, commissioners and the staff, cellular phone usage is not permitted in these chambers during any portion of this meeting. We appreciate your cooperation. Please note the Planning Commission action today is final on the following agenda items: 1.1C Preliminary Platte 20005 and 5.1C Special Permit 20047. Any aggrieved person may appeal final action of the Planning Commission to the City Council or the County Board by filing a notice of appeal with the clerk within 14 days following the action of the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission action on all other items is a recommendation to the City Council or County Board. The first item of business is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held December 16th, 2020.
So move Campbell.
Second, Beckyus.
Jerry.
Okay. Campbell?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Rymon Yost?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Beckyus?
Yes.
Core?
Abstain.
Okay. Motion carried, six to zero.
The next item of business is the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda will be called at the same time and will not be scheduled for a separate public hearing unless there is a request from someone wishing to speak or at the request of a commission member. I will ask Jerry to read all of the consent agenda items into the record. Once those items are read, she will ask if there is anyone wishing to speak. If you wish to speak on an item on the consent agenda, we would ask that you stand and state that item. That item will then be removed from the consent agenda and scheduled as a separate public hearing under Section 3 of today's agenda. All items remaining on the consent agenda will be voted upon in total with a motion for approval. Jerry, will you please call the items on the consent agenda?
Yes, thank you. Item 1.1A is Annexation 20015 to Annex Approximately 2.70 Acres. The Associated Change of Zone 20037 from AG Agricultural District to H4 General Commercial District, and the Associated Preliminary Platte 20005 for an H4 General Commercial District Preliminary Platte consisting of one lot. All of these are on property generally located at approximately North 64th Street and Arbor Road. I would mention again that the Preliminary Platte 20005 is final action by the Planning Commission unless appealed to the City Council within 14 days. Item 1.2A is Change of Zone 20034 from R2 Residential District to R2 Residential Landmark Designation, and the Associated Special Permit 20045 to Allow For Basement Apartment. Both of these are on property generally located at 3637 Holdridge Street. Are there any ex parte communications to be disclosed on these items?
I don't see any.
Are there any ex parte communications that took place or additional information you learned while visiting any of these sites?
No.
Is there anyone here wishing to speak on any of these consent agenda items? If so, please stand and state that item.
Okay. Looks like we don't have anyone here to speak on these. I would entertain a motion.
I would move approval of the consent agenda.
Second, Edgerton.
Jerry?
Okay, this is for the approval of the consent agenda. Campbell?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Rymon Yost?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Beckyus?
Yes.
Core?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
There are no requests for deferral, so we will now proceed to public hearings. The staff will make a brief presentation. The applicant will then be requested to present his or her testimony, followed by those who wish to testify in support, followed by those who wish to testify in opposition. The staff will then be given an opportunity to respond to the testimony, and then the applicant shall have an opportunity for rebuttal. If during your testimony you have copies of documents or materials you would like distributed to the Planning Commission members and/or included as part of the record, please provide that information to the clerk for distribution. Each person testifying should state their name and address, and shall have five minutes to speak unless additional time is requested and granted. The timer will go off after four minutes, then you will have one minute to wrap up your testimony. The Planning Commission will vote immediately at the close of the public hearing unless the commission votes to defer action or continue the public hearing. Jerry, will you please call the first public hearing item?
Yes, actually, I'll be calling the next three items together. They are associated. Item 5.1A is Annexation 20014 to Annex Approximately 74.74 Acres. The Associated Change of Zone is 20038 from AG Agricultural District to R3 Residential District, and the Associated Special Permit 20047 to Allow For Community Unit Plan with up to 510 proposed residential dwelling units on approximately 137 acres with requested waivers. All of these are on property generally located at 10400 West Van Dorn and 2300 South 98th Street. Staff recommendation for both the annexation and change of zone is conditional approval, as well as for the special permit, and this is final action on Special Permit 20047 unless appealed to the City Council within 14 days. Are there any ex parte communications to be disclosed on these items?
No.
No.
Are there any ex parte communications that took place or additional information you learned while visiting the site?
Doesn't look like it.
Tracy?
Yeah.
George, could you flip this monitor?
Oh.
This one on the end, so Tom and I can...
Oh, this one.
This one right over here, George.
So we can see what you're gonna...
Thank you.
There you go. Thank you very much.
We might need this one angled. Sorry, George.
I can see it perfectly.
Thank you. Is that good for you, Tracy?
It's great.
Okay.
George Wesselhoff, Planning Department. So where we're at, this is Van Dorn Street, South 98th Street. The annexation boundary includes eight acres, 8.11 acres on the west side of South 98th Street, which is part of the Wandering Creek Planned Unit Development. In addition to the larger annexation area, which is on the east side, this larger annexation area encompasses 66.62 acres, and it does include two acreage properties that are not owned by the applicant between South 98th Street and their property, which their property is on the north side of Van Dorn at the eastern edge of the annexation area. So these properties are all adjacent to a recent sanitary sewer line that was installed. The property on Van Dorn Street will also be next to a planned water main for Fire Ridge, so there will be urban services available for the extent of the annexation area. And then as far as the change of zone, that is on the north side of Van Dorn, east of 98th Street. It includes 29.32 acres. This is basically consistent with the Phase 1 area of the community unit plan. Which I will proceed to the community unit plan next. So the community unit plan extends from Van Dorn Street on the south to the MOPAC on the north. It also includes frontage on South 98th Street, and this includes approximately 137 acres. It's a proposed R3 community unit plan. There are residential units that would include 182 single-family detached and 328 single-family attached or multifamily dwellings. The developer's not proposing specifically multifamily dwellings as part of this proposal, but has requested that that be included as permitted in the special permit application. The proposed number of units is 510. The allowable units under the CUP regulations or design standards is 952, so they're approximately at 50% allowable for, in terms of density. The proposal is divided into five phases. Phase 1 will be located along Van Dorn Street. Phases 2 and 3 will be located to the north of Phase 1, north of Van Dorn Street. Phase 4 will be located along South 98th Street, and then Phase 5, which is in the northernmost part of the development, will be adjacent to the MOPAC Trail and south of the Camelot Acres Community Unit Plan or CUP development. The Future Land Use Map identifies the property for urban density residential with green space along the floodplain, which generally follows the drainage ways. Over 30% of the total CUP area will be preserved for open space for flood conveyance and stormwater management. Also, a trail corridor has been identified with the green space for a trail corridor to connect from the Wandering Creek Development to the west to the MOPAC Trail, which is consistent with the future trails in the comprehensive plan. In addition, the developer is including a neighborhood park and an additional trail connection that would extend from the main trail to the southeast, and so I'll have another exhibit here. So the trail, the main trail, or the one that it's reflected in the comprehensive plan will eventually extend from Wandering Creek from the southwest and connect to the MOPAC. Then there's a proposed park, which is in Outlet K, which is kind of in the east part of the development between some drainage areas. Then there will be a trail connector, there'll be a crossing of the drainage way, and the drainage, or the trail will extend to the southeast. There are some waivers that are requested. There are five waivers, the first of which is there's a request to allow creative design for the street that will be located near the park at 103rd and South Street, and this would be a waiver from the design of the street, from the subdivision ordinance or design standards, subject to the satisfaction of Lincoln Transportation and Utilities Department. There's also a waiver request from the subdivision ordinance for pedestrian ways for block lengths over 1,000 feet, including blocks 4, 11, 14, 15, and 16. And this is justified as generally these blocks are just over the limitation, and the developer has agreed to provide an additional pedestrian bike trail and north-south connector above requirements that will link the north and south parts of the CUP. There's also waivers requested for minimum lot size and minimum average lot width, which are typical for CUPs and allow for creative design, and then another common waiver request for sanitary sewers to run opposite of the street grades. I would mention that on the north end of the development, which would be part of Phase 5, there is a proposed street connection to the adjacent Camelot Acres Community Unit Plan. The developer will be responsible for the construction of this street, which is South 105th Street to the north line of the vacated railroad right-of-way or the MOPAC Trail location. The exact timing of this street construction and connection to Camelot Acres will be dependent on the actual timing of the various phases. Ultimately, the city upon annexation would accept the responsibility for South 105th Street to A Street, so it would become a public city street. As a condition of approval, temporary traffic barricades will be required at the east side of the CUP to prevent construction traffic from going through Camelot Acres on 105th, and this specifically would be tied to 48 dwelling units in Phase 5, or 75% of the units receiving occupancy approval. So the barricades would stay up until that threshold is reached. Finally, I would just mention, there was a Planning Commission memo that was sent out Monday with some changes to the conditions that were agreed to between city staff and the developer. They generally relate to access, water utility phasing, and trail design. One of those, for example, was the limitation of 60 lots for the water single-feet connection that's been modified to reflect a water phasing plan or approach. And with that, I can answer any questions you may have.
Go ahead, Dennis.
George, could you enlighten us, go back two years, and enlighten us on the general conditions? I think there's three or four, maybe five, general conditions that can trigger an annexation. And as I look at, as I, when I reviewed this, as I was looking at the annexation here, this is a little bit, it's not necessarily a weird one, if you can go through those conditions, but it looks weird on the surface. And I recall that a couple years ago, when we passed a bunch of those annexations, there was one similar to this, I think it was over by Wilderness Park and maybe Highway 77, where there's just a little bit of a touch to the existing city limits. So could you just, I think it'd be beneficial for that to get into the record, because I didn't see it in the staff report.
Sure. So the question of the boundary was looked at by both Planning and the Law Department. That's an excellent question. The types of annexations generally that are to be avoided under state statute would be a flag or, you know, an attempt to just make a connection without actually providing a holistic annexation. And so this was reviewed by Law and Planning, and it does include these other properties. Again, those properties can be served by urban services. It is legal to include them, even though they're not the same as the applicant, and that would include, again, Wandering Creek, part of Wandering Creek, and then two of the acreage properties between 98th Street and the development property. So the shape of the annexation area was looked at. Urban services, water, sewer, those aspects were looked at generally to make sure that this is consistent with the state law for annexation.
Okay, thanks.
Dick.
George, when the developer gets a 60, 60 residences occupied on the fifth portion, will 105th Street then be brought up to city standards by the developer? For paving and such?
No. So the, that threshold in the set of conditions pertaining to the barricades is separate from the ultimate taking over of that street by the city. That would be sometime in the future, we don't know when, when the, when the city could annex that area, when the city limits would extend to that area.
But so otherwise, it would remain as that asphalt road that has just been upgraded?
Yes, until such time the city would take it over.
Okay.
George, I know there was some question in some of the letters we received about timing of the different phases. Before they would get to, say, Phase 5, they would have to annex and change of zone, so it would come back before this body, before that development could occur. Is that right?
Yes, that's a good point. The change of zone only encompasses Phase 1, so they would have to come back before you with additional annexation and change of zone applications specific to improvements. They could not commence Phase 4 until there was paved access on 98th, either to A Street or to Van Dorn Street. So yes, there's some additional significant steps they would have to go through.
So neighbors would have some warning before those kind of Phase 4 and 5 would happen or be allowed to start construction?
Yes.
Okay. Another point that I wanted to make sure and get clarified is, they can only build up to 560 dwelling units. Is that, because I know on their chart, they have some unassigned.
Yes, so that is one of the changes to their request that we noted, and that's a good question. They had proposed 442 unassigned dwelling units. A more reasonable amount would be 50 dwelling units that would be unassigned, so it would be the 510 units and then the 50 unassigned dwelling units, which we're not aware that the applicant is opposed to that.
So I know a lot of the letters were concerned that they could build up to 952 units, but really, we're modifying this, and we're saying the maximum number of dwelling units they could have in there would be 560.
Right, 510 plus the 50 unassigned.
Can you, hopefully, maybe you have the map that's a little bit bigger, so you can show me. I wanted to make sure that I was looking at the right thing for the trail, the pedestrian crossing in lieu of the bridge.
Yes, I think, if you bear with me, I think I have a park exhibit buried in my papers here.
Sorry?
No, that's all right.
There's a lot of different maps on this one.
Here we go. So this is a Zoom area or blow-up of the proposed park area. Is this the area that you're...
Yep, yep.
And so that, that, that street reference, that one waiver that talked about South Street and 103rd, that's, that's this area here. The trail from, coming from Wandering Creek direction is this here, which would extend up north to connect to the MOPAC, and then the southerly trail connection that would cross the drainage way from the park is here.
Okay, so it kind of has that darker hatching on it?
Yes.
Okay, good. A lot of the other letters that we received talk about, and this might not be applicable because we're not really to that phase yet, but providing a buffer between the homes and the, and the MOPAC Trail. You know, a lot of times we, you know, when we have development go in next to, you know, a different thing, we require like a six-foot buffer. Can, is anything like that being required?
So the, the trail itself, or the right-of-way itself, is 100 feet, and so what we're suggesting is that by itself, that is significant enough of a requirement or buffer. There's not an additional requirement in the ordinance or that we're proposing with this.
Okay. Making sure I'm getting all my questions here.
If I can build on that for a second, George. In your most recent staff memo, you talked a little bit about the pedestrian crossing and the easement, 40-foot easement with the 20-foot corridor. That's, that's not directly, we're not talking about the trail there.
Correct, we're not talking about the MOPAC. That's...
We're talking about the pedestrian crossing that the developer will be including as...
Right, and so generally speaking, trail easements are 20 feet wide, and then the other number refers to the construction and maintenance area that's needed.
The easement, okay. Okay, I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
And then if I could ask a follow-up question too, George. Between the proposed platted lots and the MOPAC Trail, it looks like there's a 30-foot storm sewer easement there. Is that correct? That's what I'm showing here.
I, I think the developer is showing voluntarily a buffer area.
Sure.
That's not something that we can require, but they are showing that.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Yeah, Dick.
Does that buffer area presently have trees on it?
I am not sure the applicant can maybe answer that question.
Anything else for George right now?
Uh-uh.
Okay. Applicant.
Good afternoon. Rick Onan with the NA Consulting Group, 701 O Street. Here on behalf of Fire Ridge LLC, the developer for this project. As George mentioned, we're proposing about 510 single-family units on about 137 acres. We are pleased to say that we have worked through a lot of the conditions with staff, both LTU and Planning, and we think, although there's a few minor details to work out, we think we are in general agreement with all the conditions of approval that they have put forth. I guess first of all, I'll answer a few of the questions that you had come up with. So we are showing a, and I'm not exactly sure the width, it's somewhere between 20 and 30 feet of additional buffer along the north on the MOPAC Trail. That is for, again, a buffer area and some grade transition for what we want to do for the rear lots on those lots backing onto that. I believe the property line goes about to the fence line right now, so the trees that are there are all on the old railroad right-of-way. They would not be in this buffer zone. One of the other things about this site that had not been mentioned, there are two fairly large tributaries of Salt Creek that cross the property. That includes a significant amount of floodplain area and floodway. So with that, we're maintaining over 40 acres of green space of the 137 acres total. About five of that is being earmarked for a community park. The rest of that will all be maintained by the HOAs for the development. The rest of that will all be maintained by the HOAs for the development. I know the, many of the neighboring properties have voiced some concern about the density, and maybe there's been some hint that the floodplain shouldn't be included in those calculations, but that is typically how urban density is calculated, based on the raw, raw area that's available. Another thing that, in terms of density, that's interesting to note, like I said, there's about thirty-five, thirty-six acres that will be maintained by those HOAs. So, and, and this isn't just grass area that needs to be mowed, it's some substantial waterways. So it's going to take some resources to maintain it and keep it up. And so having some higher density to, you know, more, more rooftops to fund those operations will be beneficial. I guess one of the other things in terms of design of this, the area, particularly on the west side of the larger channel, actually a west side of both channels, sits fairly low relative to the, the floodplain, just a, within a foot or three of the high-water, hundred-year elevation. So those areas really are not conducive to basements. In a lot of cases, these would be areas that might get designated for apartments, but that is not this developer's intention. His intention is for duplex properties that would be owner-occupied. And so that is the mechanism that we use to generate the density that we've got. That's really all I had, I guess I'll take any questions.
Any questions for the applicant right now? All right, thank you. Testimony in support of this application. Testimony in support. Okay, I don't see any. And, and reminder that this is for all three applications, the annexation, the change of zone, and the, and the special permit. And we don't have any Zoom testifiers that are in support? No? Okay. Testimony in opposition. Testimony in opposition. Come on up.
I don't have the word, there's a lot of them.
Whichever, whoever wants to come up first, whoever wants to be brave.
I'm Larry Fletcher, nineteen hundred South, a hundred and Fifth. Like a few minutes to address the, my property. I have a conservation easement on it. It's by Wis, Wis, Wiskosk, oh, I can't get it out right now, sorry. By the Audubon, somebody say it for me. Anyway, we have an easement that's permanent, and they have ground that by the city. We went to a lot of extra trouble to get it to be an easement. We've had a prairie on it. It's also been a part of the Audubon and the Arbor, Nebraska Arbor Association has started our woodlands. We have over two hundred trees and shrubs that are there for everybody. And we've really intended our land to be kind of a permanent reservoir for nature. We've used it for public uses, high school, botany classes, and there's a lot of groups that can find it, and we'd like to have it as a permanent setting if possible. That was a use of our land. I guess we think compact density is a part of planning, which it should be, if it's in a proper place and density. I think that ought to be a big consideration. Maybe it has been, maybe it hasn't, but it really puts our land in a very awkward position for what we wanted to do with it. And I think the development, I know it's past all the dotted i's and the crossed t's, and it's going to be a, kind of a problem. When you're eighty-plus, you don't necessarily ask for the tomorrow, you ask for the preservation. So I think you ought to at least consider that. I got one other comment. We got flooding on our backside where the two creeks come in and make one big creek. I'm not sure FEMA or the developer has ever looked at that creek. It's very erosive. It's got fifteen-feet banks, and it floods with a three-inch rain. I read the two hundred and fifty-nine drainage pages of the, of their drain system for the development. I'm not an expert on that, I'll have to say, but I've walked along the creek with, after a three-inch rain, after a wet season, and it floods, and with the rooftops and all the cement, it's probably going to flood a lot more. I know they have retention ponds, I've counted them. It's going to be hard to keep those up, they'll probably end up being weedy and probably stale water for the mosquitoes, but maybe they can try. But in general, those two items are important to me. I know others will speak about the MOPAC trail. I have a personal interest in it. I spent a year and a half spending, raising two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to buy the MOPAC corridor and the trail. I was very personally involved. I promised them, when the citizens of the Lincoln and the business come up with two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that we would have a nature trail that they could enjoy. I know the development's going to have a lot of other trails, but not the MOPAC. And when that Phase Five is ready, I probably won't be here, but there's going to be a hundred and twenty to a hundred and forty cars crossing the trail, plus all the carriers. And it really wasn't, wasn't meant to be. I know it was all plotted out in nineteen ninety-four, and there's all sorts of things that go on, but I don't think they really realized what they were doing when they did that. And in general, you know, there are thirty-five residences circling around the property. That's about seventy people. They, my time-
About one minute left, if you want to wrap up your testimony?
They lived on their acreages, small ones, big ones, for thirty, forty years. They put a lot of work into the nature, and I think the development in general is somewhat negative to everything that we've tried to do. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Fletcher, I, I have a question for you.
Yes.
George, I don't know if you could bring a map up, but I would love to see where the, where the arboretum is in reference to, to this project. I was trying to get a picture in my head, but I'd love to see on the map where that property is, if you could point that out, please?
That was exactly my question, too.
We have two hundred trees and bushes that we put out over the past twenty-five years. It's on the-
This is Camelot Acres?
Yeah. It's pretty much on the west, and it goes up to our road, which is, there's about ten acres involved on mostly the west side.
Okay.
So I mean, our, our land goes probably a little less than a quarter of a mile on, a quarter of a mile along the development, on the, on his east side.
Is that-
Is that an aerial photograph?
Is that an aerial photo by chance?
Yeah.
Yeah, that'd be better.
Sir, could you put that on the projector there next to you? Please?
George, you might have to help him.
Okay, thank you.
You can put the map here, sir.
Oh.
Sorry.
Sure.
So you're, this is the MOPAC right here.
Yeah.
So if you wanted to describe to the commission what you're referring to by the MOPAC?
Oh, it goes all the way from, I'd say, all the way on the west side, from the MOPAC to the end of our property, which is the creek. We have two hundred trees, and in the, in the creek area is an old woodland where there are seventy-five, eighty, hundred-year-old trees that are on the creek, along the creek.
So what's the total size of your acreage?
I'm sorry, sometimes I don't hear so well.
A total size of your acreage?
Thirty acres.
Thirty acres.
Short couple, I think they've taken out for sewers, and part of it was plotted out back in nineteen ninety-four when they did their plotting to make an easement for this new development thirty years later.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next, testimony in opposition?
George, can I borrow that picture? Might want to just leave it up here. All mine.
My name's Craig Hunt, I live at ten one twenty Van Dorn, and I'm in opposition to the development. Development is proposing to, I've got four points here, and I'm just going to, I probably start in the order of importance to me, but the development, from what I've seen, at least in one proposal, is proposing to close my driveway to Van Dorn. And putting this map back up here, let's see here, that doesn't look right. There we go. My property is, driveway is a quarter of a mile long right here, and then this kind of this rectangle-ish shape. So probably about a half a mile long this proposed first-phase development. And what they were proposing was rerouting me, my house is about here, up through their neighborhood, wind around and come back out this way. In the last twelve months, I've spent over forty thousand dollars in installing new concrete. It's neighborhood-grade concrete. I did that because I planned on being out there for another twenty, ten to twenty years because when the city condemned part of my land to put the sewer line in, they said they weren't going to cross Ninety-Eighth for twenty more years. And they used that as part of their argument in devaluing my land, so they didn't have to pay as much on the easement. Here we are, two years later, and, you know, I'm standing here in front of the commission. But putting the roundabout, not only would be a tremendous burden on my family as far as access, I mean, it's a safety issue. I mean, if, if I had a house fire and they had to go through that neighborhood to get to my house, that, that doesn't make a lot of sense to me, if they had to come up Van Dorn, go through the neighborhood, and come over to my house over here. That really doesn't make a lot of sense. But the other thing I wanted to point out, I did bring some photos of, because this, literally, I just put this driveway in last fall. That's just a photo of the entrance to it from the west. And so the roundabout would be approximately here, so they'd have to take all this out. That's a shot straight to the north. Thank goodness, I didn't let them talk me into paving the whole thing, but that's about a hundred and sixty feet of four-inch concrete fortified back. But the, a bigger concern, a safety concern of mine is, a, a safety concern I have right now, and that is, this is a blind hill. And it's, and it's not just this hill, there's another hill on the other side of this hill. So when people are coming from the east traveling west, it, it wouldn't, in my opinion, I'm not a traffic engineer, be the safest place to, to put a roundabout right here. And, and then lastly, as far as the roundabout's concerned, we've got this eighty acres south of here, sixty acres. Someday that's going to come into the fold, too. Wouldn't it make more sense, if you were going to do the roundabout, to move it a little bit to the east, so that you could feed both of these two tracts of land into one roundabout for safety reasons? I guess, I don't know how much I need to show on my driveway. Here's a south-to-north view of the improvements that I made. Okay, so item two. You know, the, the developer already has access to, to the property they, they are purchasing or have purchased from Ninety-Eighth Street. And to me, it'd be a lot less evasive for them to come in off Ninety-Eighth Street and, and put the burden on them as far as improving Ninety-Eighth, which has been promised long, 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 long time. I mean, I own property along Ninety-Eighth, and the county came in and tore out all my trees and my fences, and, but they were very fair when they did that. I mean, they, they compensated me for what they took away. But at that time, which was probably ten years ago at least, they said that they were going to improve, because they widened it to four lanes from two lanes. At that time, they said that Ninety-Eighth was going to be paved, you know, within a few years, and like I said, it's been ten years. And I just don't understand the rationale of what, why we don't improve arterials and, and, and utilize property that we have that is in the existing, so when I say find a path of the city versus, you know, creating kind of a strange annexation here where I'm going to kind of be a loner out here. I don't know if I call the county sheriff, the police department, or who I would call living out here by myself, and then my neighbors all along here. I guess they're still in the county. That really just doesn't make a lot of sense from my standpoint. And so I, I guess I would like that addressed. I mean, I would like to know why they don't use the access off Ninety-Eighth Street versus jumping over acreages to come in off of Van Dorn. I guess I put three into one, but that was more, number three was just the negotiation that I went through with the city when they put the sewer line through the north end of my property. And, which really leads into number four. I mean, this whole process has not been done in good faith. I mean, a guy showed up on my driveway in October, said, "We're going to shut your driveway down, we're going to put a roundabout down here, and, and, you know, we're going to develop this land." And, and then my wife and I were going out of town, and we get notice that they're going to have a, a neighborhood meeting, you know, down at, wherever that was, down by Texas Road. down by, uh, Texas Roadhouse. Which we were out of town, I couldn't even show up. And my other neighbor said, "Well, we all showed up," and then they canceled it. And then turned right around in December, I get a letter in the mail on Thursday that they're having a, a, a meeting on Monday. You know, thankfully, I was in town, but, I mean, you know, what, what kind of good faith is that? I mean, of working with your neighborhood and, and, and doing this kind of a project. I mean, this is a big project. So I would like to, at the commission, you know, look into that as well as why wasn't there a better communication chain to let us in the neighborhood be more prepared and learn more about what was actually gonna happen versus being reactionary? Like, I think you'll probably hear more testimony, so... That's all I have.
I have a question for you, sir.
Sure.
So you don't have any interest in being annexed?
No.
Thank you.
Dick?
Can you, uh, pull up where the 98th Street connection would come through to your property?
Well, I own...
Just a second, because it's not on the screen. There it is.
My, I own a, a piece of property here and I own this piece of property over here. So this piece of property connects to this piece of property. So the county, you know, took out this right-of-way right here along 98th. So my property, you know, this property and this property over here would still be in the county and where I live would be in the city.
And how would you come off of 98th to get to your house?
Well, not very easily. I come off Van Dorn right now.
Right.
See, right here where this black line is, that, that's about where my driveway is right now.
But you were proposing that there be a connection from 98th?
Well, I think that the, the developer should start here because it, you know, this has all been approved by the city to be developed into homes and whatnot. I mean, it would be, in my opinion, easier for them to start here on the north access, you know, and then build out this way, you know, versus annexing two pieces of property that, and I don't know if Dr. Bastani's on Zoom or not, or if he's for or against it, but, you know, I don't think either, at least I can speak for myself. I wasn't interested in being annexed. So, you know, why, why annex two properties that may or may not have an interest of being annexed to do this development over here when, you know, that property would be connected right to a main arterial? I mean, I...
The layout that I'm looking at, though, uh, there's no connection from that, uh, I believe it's Phase Four, to, uh, Phase One, Two, and Three, um, because of the drainage, uh, the creek running through there. And so I was just curious...
Well, it's not that they couldn't put it in there. I mean, you know, they could put a box culvert in there. I mean, I've got, you know, I can get across my creek, I mean, it's, you know, it's its cost. Meaning that's, that's my guess of why they wanna come in here, 'cause this is paved and this isn't.
Got it. Thank you.
Tracy?
Go ahead.
So, so really, one of, one of your, the points you're trying to make, if I can say it another way, is, is the phasing doesn't make sense to you, which, which sort of gets back to my initial question about annexation. This is a kind of a weird annexation layout to me and you're, you're kind of supplementing that thought with where they're starting the project in, in association with how the annexation is laid out or, or the, the boundaries of the annexation as opposed to where, um, from your perspective anyway, it could start, which is closer to where the touch happens.
Correct.
The city limit. So I, yeah, I, is that, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but is that, that's an issue?
When you said that earlier, I was like, that's... You gotta pardon my blue collar, but I thought that's kind of a cockeyed way to, you know, annex property. I mean, if we're, you're jumping two properties to get to, you know, the piece you want to annex, really. I mean, they, you know, the city doesn't have an interest in my property. And yet they have a piece that, you know, would fit right in there on an arterial and... I'm sure they don't wanna pave half of 98th, but, you know, they, I, you know, I'm not gonna get in that speculation.
I think that's, that's a fair question for the developer to, you know, answer for us. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Good?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Next person that wishes to testify in opposition?
Good afternoon. I'm Larry's neighbor, Jim Pearson. I live up on the top side of 105th Street, on the west side, on 105th and A. And, uh, basically, I guess I've got a couple of concerns. Obviously, I, I'm an old Department of Roads guy for many, many years and I, uh, obviously have, have studied a lot of transportation issues. And, uh, in the last few years, I was in charge of funding trail systems and, and historic preservation. And that's why Larry and I are pretty good friends because we were able to put a little bit of money in that MOPAC trail and help these folks get one of the first major projects in the state. But that being said, you know, it, it just occurred to me that we live along 105th and it's a, not even a collector, it's a, it's a local street. And you've got two arterials that the developer is wanting to hook into, Van Dorn, 98th. And I guess that's what it takes, is two points of access. But that being said, I see no reason why 105th ought to be opened up. Because basically, uh, because of all the natural things that are going on out there. And, uh, fact is, I, I noticed that, um, Outlet K, if you can point that out, is between those two forks, has been reserved for a park, a future park. Why not move that up against the MOPAC trail? Just move it across the creek to the north and leave that as, as green space? 'Cause I, I also farm and I've seen a lot of my farmland, that I've farmed, White Horse, Boulder Ridge. I've noticed how, since the 90s, early 2000s, as it's developed, there doesn't seem to be much care given to plowing up, putting houses in. And, uh, not only that, but if you look at that little strip down there by, uh, excuse me, down by the MOPAC, that's in a floodplain. It's got wetland issues. Has anybody ever talked to the Corps about their wetland delineation maps? I doubt it. That's the last thing they do. I know that held up a, a White Horse for over a year. They discovered three acres of wetlands. All the dirty, uh, moving equivalent had to go home. Year later, they got it resolved. When I look across the MOPAC, I see a lot more than three acres of wetlands that nobody's gonna be able to do anything with. And, uh, so with that, that's my concern in trying to retain some green space out there and not have to hustle down there with my boat to rescue some of those people. Each of one of those lots needs to come with a boat that backs up onto the MOPAC, in my opinion. 'Cause I've seen it flood down there, I'm sure Larry has, too. So with that, that's my big concern, so I think it's a real thing that needs to be resolved. And why not, uh, just move that up, Outlet K, move that up, make that into a park area? It'd be right next door to a pristine property that Larry owns that is beneficial to all the kids and everybody that gets out there. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next testimony in opposition?
Hello, my name is, uh, Tim Donner. I live at 9920 Van Dorn Street. My driveway is just a couple hundred feet on Van Dorn, next to the entrance into Phase One, Two, and Three of the proposed development. We moved to that property in 2012 and have made quite a few improvements to the property with the, uh, with the plan to live there for the rest of our lives. Although, we recognize that there is the potential for development that would happen, um, in the years subsequent of us moving there. We did not anticipate the, uh, the entrances and, uh, access points that are proposed right now. Additionally, certainly the density that we're being shown on this. So, um, to move quickly through this, I, uh, a couple of, uh, the, the main items I want to address is the access and the density. In the staff report, it's noted that 98th Street is a minor arterial, uh, access street in the area. In fact, 98th is a heavily traveled gravel road. I know this, this commission's probably very familiar with, uh, the history of 98th and its inability to get developed. Uh, but some of the outfall of that is, uh, when, uh, a lot of people use that corridor to get from Highway Two to A Street up to 84th, bypassing the 84th Street traffic. It's very heavily traveled. As a result, uh, we have constant washboard, um, on that road. And, uh, the stop sign in particular at 98th and Van Dorn, there's multiple accidents there every year, just the way that you approach it. You come up on it abruptly, people tend to roll through it. Our constant, our, our family protocol is to drive slowly through that even though the stop sign's on the, the 98th Street side. Moreover, on that, um, I've got some, just a second, take this off, too. I wanted to, this is just a couple of months ago. This is the dust outfall that we see on a routine basis off of 98th. My point to this is, uh, that the traffic that's being driven now down towards 98th, I know the, the plan to get through, uh, Two, Phases One, Two, and Three is to be Van, on Van Dorn, but realistically, there is a tremendous amount of traffic already on 98th. This is a typical situation, uh, for when we have any short-term dry periods. The dust cloud comes up as traffic rises through the day. And usually, you can't, you can't go outside, but by morning, it's settled out. But it's kind of this constant, uh, revolving, uh, situation that we, we deal with out there. The other, uh, that's 98th, so it's just the, the, the traffic that's gonna be driven there for either parts of these developments, One, Two, and Three, or Four and Five. Closer to my house is, this is a picture of, uh, what Craig had touched on earlier. If you look at, uh, this is 98th Street crossing this way. Uh, you have, uh, three driveways leading up to what is the intersection right at the top of the hill there. That is a blind area. At this point, there's constantly traffic coming over that you, that, uh, is having to negotiate out of our driveways. But I guess more concerning, other than Craig's, you know, major concern of losing his driveway access, is, uh, twice it's been mentioned that although a roundabout is preferred, potentially a turn lane will be installed. That's on two separate occasions, we've heard that. That would be a major hazard in that area. It's also been said, "Well, we, we would have to regrade the Van Dorn Street to meet city standards, so it's flatter at the top." Well, that seems like a large process in itself. I know that, in particular, I can show you on this. This is that intersection right here, and this is Craig's driveway coming through here. It's been explained to me that the roundabouts have to be at the end of the development, that there's a specific ordinance on this, uh, or design standard to where it couldn't be put in this flatter area that wouldn't obstruct any other of the existing driveways. But there's already a number of variances asked for. I, I would ask that that be looked at, to move this, uh, potential roundabout into this area and that at all, by all means, avoid turn lanes, uh, to get into this Phase One, Two, and Three. I guess with that, um, this map shows, which I, I know has been addressed, uh, by everybody, that, you know, they're using 137 acres as a, uh, as a property total acreage to get to 3.72 dwelling units per acre, when in fact, you're losing about 28% to the wetlands that are undeveloped. Gain that up to a higher number of 5.2. I guess my, my major concern in relation to the density really has to do with these people being landlocked in here. With the developments that we've seen in the last few years in Firethorn, Wandering Creek, Hillcrest, uh, other smaller acreages, we see a lot of hikers, I'm saying walkers, people walking dogs, bikers, joggers, that are on these streets of Van Dorn, 98th, that have no shoulders, no public means to walk out. I don't think it's realistic to expect these people to, uh, what the, what the plan says, stay within the, uh, you know, a significant pedestrian walkway system. I, I'm not seeing that in this phase. I guess further from there, um, it's, you know, there's a development that's planned to bring the bridge across over to the MOPAC for, for an outlet for them to, to get the biking, dog-walking, such activities in. But that's in the fifth phase, which, um, uh, the long-term duration on that is 12-year development. So what happens in these first phases is, is the people spill out and try to get to a connector that is, uh, literally more than a mile away to any sort of public walk, which is in Wandering Creek, that's, that's been recently developed. So there's, the, the two, the, the density of it is very difficult for us to, to understand. The variance to reduce from a 5,000-square-foot lot to a 3,500-square-foot lot for a creative design, I don't understand that term, um, that's in the staff report. And additionally, a reduction in a lot width from 40 to 30 foot on the variance is also just hard for me to comprehend, given, given the location of this and, uh, you know, this being on a ridge where Stevens Creek, where the, the drainage would end, this is gonna sit out here for a long time in a high density, surrounded by a lot of large, larger properties. It just seems like a very odd situation. Finally, just to wrap up, um, I'll just echo the same comment that's been made before about, uh, using these single-family homes just to be a good neighbor to the existing properties that are there, that are gonna be there indefinitely. It would be nice to have these larger homes around the outside, just as a visual buffer instead of the high density that's proposed to the outside.
Any questions? Thank you for coming up.
Mr. Donner, can I get copies of those photos that you referred to?
Sure.
If you could just put them in that folder, Manello folder that's up there on the post.
Should be kind of right underneath your papers already. Oh.
That's my folder.
There you go. Oh, that's your folder, oh.
Maybe it got taken.
You just wanna leave it on?
Yeah.
Yeah, that'd be fine.
You bet.
I'll use those for exhibits.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Leave them up here.
Yep, great, thank you.
Thank you. Any further testimony in opposition?
Hello, uh, I'm Noel Timmons, 1700 South, 105th. Uh, I just wanted to speak in opposition to some of the aspects of this development. First, I want to support the blockade of 105th Street until at least 84 or 75% of the home occupancy permits have been issued with that fifth phase. We've put a lot of money into getting 105th up to standards and, and, uh, it, it won't handle... We've put a lot of money into getting 105th up to standards, and it won't handle construction traffic. It wasn't designed for that. So, I appreciate the developer's attitude toward that. The second thing I wanted to talk about, and a previous speaker just touched on that, if you notice the way the development is designed, all of the larger lots are in the interior of the design. And the smaller multifamily units are all on the perimeter. This is kind of the exact opposite of what you would do if you were trying to be a good neighbor to the surrounding acreages. You know, those have been there for a long time, and it would be nice if they made a better attempt to blend in with the surrounding neighborhoods. This is kind of like putting up a wood fence and then having the ugly side of the wood fence face toward your neighbors. I mean, you can do that, but it's just rude. It's not done. It's not a neighborly Nebraska nice kind of thing to do. You could have all of the multifamily in the interior, have all of the perimeter lots be at least as big as the largest lots on the interior, and it would help provide a better buffer for the appearance of the surrounding neighborhoods, and help blend in and just be a better neighbor to the existing lots. He would still have the same number that he would have. I think that's too dense. I agree that I'm against the waiver of the lot size and the lot width. I don't think that's a good thing. But just by having that perimeter be the larger lots, that would help lessen the impact on the surrounding acreages. The third thing I want to talk about is I want to take off my homeowner act hat right now and put on my runner and my high school cross-country coach hat, and talk about the impact on the MOPAC trail. The MOPAC, if you guys don't get on it, it's a great trail, and it's one of the most heavily-used trails in the city. The reason for that is that we can get out there and run on that, have a soft surface, and also have the rural surrounding and the rural feel to it. It's great for our kids. We get out there on a Saturday morning in the fall, I bet I'll see five or six different cross-country teams from around the city out there. That's a huge deal. It's great because if the surface is soft on our runner's legs, but also, we get the kids out and get a rural feel. I think we need to do whatever we can to maintain that rural feel of that trail. People come from all over the city to use that. If you keep developing that closely, you'll keep pushing that drive out and making them drive further. Some of the houses that are developed in the new building right around Hillcrest, with a good north wind, you could practically spit on the trail from their deck. It's too close. We need to prevent that. I know that George has, I've talked with him about this a little bit, and he said, "We've not done that before," and he's saying the buffer's a little bit wider, and I acknowledge that. But I think this is something we need to do for future generations. We need to start proactively asking this of developers when they're developing out in these areas. Let's maintain our natural nature corridor there. Let's maintain good neighborly relations with the neighbors around, with the larger lots, and let's start requiring that of any development that comes up in the future. We got notice, again, very short notice of what this design was like, so we didn't have time to say, "Hey, guys, why don't you think about this in your design?" That would have been nice to have started from the beginning, instead of now at the last minute, asking you guys to help protect the neighbors that have been around forever. A lot of this just comes down to being a good neighbor, and that's what we're asking of the developer. Most people would do that automatically. It doesn't seem like that's a priority, so I think I'd love to have you guys help us require them to be a good neighbor. If I could point out, one other thing, I live right across from Larry, and I want to point out where his lot is maybe a little bit more accurately. Is that on the screen?
It'll be magic.
There it is.
There we go.
Okay. So, Larry's house, so here is the MOPAC trail going through here. Larry's house comes across right about here. This entire area right here that I'm tracing is all of Larry's nature center. It's a gorgeous native prairie.
Sorry, I don't mean to interrupt you. The area that you just pointed out, I believe, is part of the application process, is Larry's?
One over.
Is Larry's one over in the darkened area?
No.
Looks like maybe it was a prescribed burn at one point.
You are.
Is that right, on the upper right-hand corner, the big dark?
Yeah, so it's all this area here.
Okay.
Yep, it looks like that was just after a burn. But anyway, it's a beautiful native prairie with native grasses. Larry and Pig planted all this by hands, by seeds they collected by themselves. This is gorgeous. You aren't going to find many areas like that. If you combine that with maintaining the natural nature kind of feel of the MOPAC, then you've got quite a bit of birds and wildlife out there. It's a great resource. That's about all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further testimony in opposition?
One more person signed up in here?
Good afternoon. Hey, having fun? My name is Tom McDonald. I live at 1900 South 98th Street. Been there for about 40 years. And I know you can't stand in the way of development. Population is going, we have to keep moving out, doing what we can. I think the density is way too high over there. Can you see? This is our property right here. So, we're touching the west, northwest edge, and we're bordered by the MOPAC trail. All of this is going to funnel out onto 98th Street. This, there is a private road there, but I've talked to John Riley, they're vehemently against anybody else using that. So, if you're thinking you might be able to get cars out there, you sure better talk to them. I think it's going to be a real battle up there. We have complained about 98th Street for decades, and as Firethorn got developed, 98th Street got worse and worse. The washboard is terrible. And time and time again, we've been told, okay, we're going to widen that, it's going to be the next 84th Street, it's going to be paved. Well, yeah, they widened it. It's all grass and weeds on that side. It's still a gravel road that's in terrible condition. And so, we have this development, everything flowing out here, and on the west side of 98th Street, there's another development there, including Hillcrest and some others. Between the two, 800, 900 homes are going to be right in here. Not everybody will come this direction, but the traffic's going to increase dramatically. That road needs to be paved, and I think it should be done in advance of all of this development. It's just going to get worse and worse. And frankly, it's hard to really have faith that you're actually going to do it. At one of the last meetings, I said, "Well, you've got to have the development, and then the infrastructure comes afterwards." Well, we've heard about getting this thing paved many, many times. It needs to be done. So, that's my main point. You've got an awful lot of people coming through there, and you don't have the infrastructure to handle it. Thank you very much.
Can I ask you a question, sir? Isn't 98th paved south of Van Dorn?
No. Is nine, is, say it again?
98th paved south of Van Dorn?
It goes from A Street way on south. The dead ends, 98th dead ends at A Street.
For now.
Hillcrest is over there, Peds are over on the other side.
Right.
It's paved at Old Cheney.
Yeah. Old Cheney?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other testimony in opposition?
We have one person on the ground.
Okay. I think we're ready for them, then. Hi.
Hi. I'm online, so are you available for more testimony?
Please?
Sure. My name is Zubin Bastani, and we're at 98th Street, just north of the Fletcher property, just south of the, I believe it is the Phase Five.
Go ahead.
And I have, so my name's Zubin, I have a couple quick questions and concerns. First of all, the annexation of decision that's being made, I, we, I don't, we are not in favor of our property being part of that annexation, and so, we wanted to understand what options may exist for that. Just like the Fletcher property just south of us, we'd like to be excluded from the annexation for our property. Secondly, that Phase Five, based on the images that we've seen of the proposed development, it does appear that it's preventing us from having options in terms of how we want to treat our land. Based on everything we see in there, it really does appear that, based on the high density of homes, there's really no way to provide an exit without coming through our land. And with that number of homes right there, if there was ever an emergency, how are those, all of those families could possibly get out of that small, tiny little area? So, it does look like the developer is pretty much relying on a road to be pulled through the north end of our property in order to allow those families to be able to exit/escape. But, so I just wanted to express my concern on that as well, that it feels like our land is being encroached upon based on this high-density development that's going in just on the north edge of it. Are there, is this testimony specific to the entire development, or is it specific just to the Phase One development?
Entire development.
Okay. So, I guess, I would, that's our, that's our opposition in terms of at least the design of what is being proposed, is that it does feel like it's absolutely encroaching on our property and not really giving us an opportunity to have options with our property based on what's being proposed today.
I want to make sure, and under, so that I understand where your property is at. Are you, can you tell me your address again?
Yeah, sorry. It's farmland. It's the farmland, just on the north of Van Dorn, south of the Phase Five development.
Okay.
So, you are between 98th Street and Craig Hunt's land, is that correct?
I am east of 98th Street.
Yes, east of 98th Street, okay.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that I understood that you are included in the annexation piece and, and, yeah, and that you don't want to be. Any other questions right now?
No, ma'am.
Thank you for zooming in for us.
Yep, thank you for having me.
Any other testimony in opposition? No, okay. Well, I think then we're ready for staff to come back up. Okay.
We'll see if that shows up very well. Nope, I'm afraid it's going to be a little washed out.
I think that's okay. We can see okay, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's probably have to be better. Yeah, I just really, I just really zoomed in a little bit.
Go ahead, Tom.
My first question has to do with the pieces that were, that are being annexed in order to provide the availability of annexation to the parcel of which we're reviewing today. On the west side of 98th Street, we have an approved CUP that extends north, adjacent, that is directly across the street from the other parcel, that the CUP that we're talking about on the east side of 98th Street, they butt each other. George, can you explain to me why we're looking at the annexation of the two properties that we're looking at today as opposed to another configuration?
Some of that is developer choice. They're proposing to develop this area here, which you're describing as, or identifying as Phase One. In order to do that, they have to extend the annexation boundary along with urban services to facilitate that. And so, Wandering Creek, there's part of Wandering Creek which is included, the gentleman that just spoke, his property here on the east side of 98th, and then the other gentleman that had the concern about his driveway, those three properties not owned by the applicant are included as part of this holistic annexation.
Are there any urban services that will be installed on either one of those properties in order to facilitate development of the property that we're looking at today?
Not immediately. I mean, there is an existing trunk line, a relatively new sanitary sewer trunk line, and there will be water line extensions related or that will service this development. But those existing acreage properties can continue, they can, if they have wells, they can maintain those wells, subject to inspection. There would not be some new level of infrastructure, if that's your question, on those acreage properties.
Okay. Because I, you know, the only thing here that really, you know, gives me heartburn is the choice to annex those two properties because the developers wish on Phase One, as opposed to an annexation that would include the property to the north of the two properties being annexed, in addition to the developers' wish to annex Phase One. I, it seems as though the, I'll ask that to the developer. Thank you, George.
In your, in your staff report, you talked about the waiver of the lot size and square footage being something that's commonly done with the CUP. But without that waiver, you don't get to the density that we have in front of us. Am I, am I correct in assuming that?
I don't know that it's a question of that they wouldn't get to the density, that those types of waivers for lot area, lot width have been approved before, like for example, in Hillcrest Community Unit Plan, they reduced the minimum lot area to 2,500 square feet for townhomes and single-family attached units. So, it's not uncommon at all. It's just to facilitate in certain areas of the CUP where they would like to have reduced design. But overall, again, I would mention in terms of density, I know that's come up more than once, the overall density is approximately 50% under the limit, or at 50%. By comparison, you know, they have, they're proposing 510 units on 137 acres, that's 3.72 dwelling units per acre approximately. Wandering Creek to the west, when they initially came in with their first phase, that was 711 units on 78 acres, which comes out to 9.04 dwelling units per acre. So, yes, it will be urban density that's in the comprehensive plan, but it will be even less than Wandering Creek to the west.
Does Wandering Creek have as much green space?
They have significant green space. I don't know the exact percentage of acreage, but there's, yes, there's a very significant drainage area that's not going to be developed in Wandering Creek.
Go ahead.
George, is it not correct that the two pieces, or the piece of farmland, and then the acreages that are proposed to be in the annexation? the acreages that are proposed to be in the annexation, they need to be annexed to make it a contiguous property, is that correct?
That is correct.
So, you couldn't really annex Phase One, Two, and Three without annexing those others?
Correct, they need the contiguous extension of the city limits.
Thank you.
But an alternative could be to annex Phase Four, and then annex Phase One.
Four doesn't touch One.
Well, it could. I mean, this is all choice of the developer.
I thought the stream was in the way, the creek.
Yeah, I might, I might just mention that Wandering Creek is not, I mean, there's still conceptual areas that are not annexed, that are not final, they don't have final plans for yet, they'll have to come before you.
Sure.
So there's not connectivity at Phase Four presently for annexation, if that...
Right, but there could be.
In time, yes.
But I mean, you're currently annexing a portion of Wandering Creek that's not developed today.
Correct, that's closest to the existing portion of Wandering Creek that's in the city limits.
Steve Hendrickson with the Planning Department, I might be able to provide some additional information from the infrastructure standpoint that might help explain things. As many people pointed out, 98th Street does need to be improved. The county has in their plans to pave 98th Street, starting from Old Cheney up to A Street. That project would start in 2022, it may not be completed until 2023. So, this project, it's Phase Four, it's Phase Five. Phase Four can't begin until you have paving of 98th Street. So that's a, that's a condition that's in the requirement. So they can't start and put a whole bunch of traffic on a gravel road. And so, that's a very expensive project, so the development has to wait for that. So, if Phase One was to come off of 98th Street, it would have to wait until the year 2023 in order to develop. And so, this development is trying to get started in 2021. It's trying to provide lots in the community. We've heard from the home builders, and a lot of associations that have expressed support for trying to increase the amount of housing options that are in the community. So, this developer is looking to start on 98, on Van Dorn, because Van Dorn Street is already paved. And so, that is why the Phase One was put on Van Dorn. And as several people pointed out, yes, the plan is to improve that intersection, to change the grade to it. And Bob Simmering is here, and he can talk about that improvement, because I think several people pointed out, the site distance is not ideal, and Bob can explain the reason for the quarter mile and the half mile access points. But, so a lot of the infrastructure planning then led to the phasing, with the first phase really needing to be over on Van Dorn. It also is easier for us to extend the water main out of Van Dorn. There's plans to do the water main in 98th Street, but it is not there yet today. But water can bring the water main out from Van Dorn, because it stops today at about 94th Street, and they have plans to extend it further east. So, hopefully that helps add a little more information on the infrastructure, because that really did then start with the phasing as well. I would also, several people pointed out about 105th Street, infrastructure-wise, and I can provide perhaps a little background, having been here a while myself. 105th Street was approved as a private roadway, but was established to be connected to the south someday. And we might be able to point that out, hopefully this map now shows a little bit better. So that is, 105th is here today, and we'll try to zoom in a little bit closer. So 105th is here today. This is Mr. Fletcher's property here. And so he has floodplain along the south side of it, he's right along this drainage way. The dark area, I think, is the area that's mostly been in prairie grass with his property. And the MOPAC is, is right along the, the north edge. So, the road connection would be just off the northwest corner of his property. It's not on his property, actually, it is in a outlot, that is part of the private roadway. And we've been talking with the association there, to have the association, before that connection is open, for them to dedicate the private roadway to the public, so it can then be maintained by the public, because it's going to have more than just their traffic on it. So, it was always the intent for that to be a crossing of the MOPAC. It is certainly not unique to have crossings of our trail. Hillcrest has a crossing of the trail, there's a new crossing at White Horse Estates that has not yet been developed, but it'll be there as well. And we try to make all of those trail crossings as, as safe as we can. And as a runner and trail user of the MOPAC myself, it is very enjoyable to be on this section. This particular section along the south side of it, there's actually a little bit of a ridge within that 100-foot right-of-way, and the horse path goes up on top of it. And so, the south side, within the public right-of-way to be preserved, has a lot of trees in it, and as well as a pretty good natural berm, so to speak, that has a horse path on it. And you might recall from previous discussions with Hillcrest, it's maintained by the NRD today, but as we annex, the city takes over ownership of the trail, and it transfers from the NRD to the city. So this will become city segment trails. And I certainly sympathize with people who started 84th Street and love to go east, because it feels like you're in the, in the rural setting. But this is a part now of the city, and the city is definitely moving this area. And so, as I think of it, if you want to start in the rural section, after this is developed, you would start then at 112th Street and go east, and still have miles and miles of the MOPAC that is, that could be enjoyed. So we want to make all of these crossings of the MOPAC as safe as possible, but the fact that they're going to remain farmland on either side, that is something that is really not in the plans. This is area that the city can serve with water and sewer, and so we're, we're trying to be as sympathetic as we can, but a lot of that buffer really is built into the trail itself, because we're fortunate to have the 100 feet, so the trees are within that corridor.
Is it not true that 98th from A to O is going to be paved this year?
No. 98th Street eventually will be open from A to O.
Right.
The city has the agreement to have that right-of-way done, and it needs to be done within a certain time period.
Yeah.
But that is not yet in the plans for construction. The construction is from A down to Old Cheney to be done by a county project with some federal funds, working with the city on that funding, but that project may not start now till 2022 and not be done till 2023.
Is it appropriate to ask Bob to come up and talk about the improvements to Van Dorn? And timing and approach?
While Bob's coming up, George, how far south does 105th Street go currently?
It... I think, I think it goes just north of the right-of-way of the railroad, the, the trail.
So it basically stops at the trail?
In terms of the physical, there's still the, the public access, he's been, continues beyond, but yes.
Okay.
Is it the, isn't the acreage's driveway coming off of 105th and goes up to the house?
Yes, the, Mr. Fletcher's
Yeah.
driveway does come off and kind of veers to the southeast.
Right, okay.
Bob?
Thank you, Bob Simmering, Lincoln Transportation Utilities.
Bob, could you just go over generally the, the Van Dorn Improvement Project timing, you know, as much detail as you can give us?
I will. It is arterial, so according to our access management and our standard development process, we would be looking at intersections at quarter and a half mile on this. There are potential right-in, right-outs at eighth mile on the minor arterials. This particular one is dealing with one of the, I believe it's a half-mile intersection. So, our preference there is that we have a roundabout. The developer will generate impact fees, it will be used to, to offset some of the costs of this project, and it would be done with his development. Along with that, we do a grade study of the entire length of Van Dorn, so that we're not building at grades that don't provide site distance, might have negative impacts on drainage, things like that. So, in this case, we've just delivered to the developer's engineer a preliminary grade study. He can use that then to refine the intersection design for their, I think it was 102nd Street connection, and with that, we review it. Our preferences, that it, that it would be roundabout, and as far as the nearby access point, if it's practical to make the connection to the interior street, to the subdivision, we would expect that to happen in order to eliminate individual access points along the arterial.
Okay. And any, so, so you haven't done any final design, or you're not even close to final design or anything like that?
No.
Okay. Very good, thanks.
So access management would prefer the roundabout at the 103rd, 102nd location instead of farther to the east?
We would want it at the quarter and a half, and we do shift those if there's a drainage area or something that impacts it, you know, a few hundred feet. But part of the idea there is, we want spacing between the intersections for safety purposes, for traffic flow, and things of that nature.
Other questions for Bob? Okay. Other questions for staff in general?
No.
Okay, applicant rebuttal.
I'll just expand on a few things that have been talked about here. In terms of the spacing of the intersections on Van Dorn, so this point here...
I need to zoom out a little bit.
Yeah, you need to zoom out.
There we go.
This point here would be approximately the quarter mile, and this would be the half mile. So, we're proposing the, the intersection just east of the quarter mile. The next logical location for the half mile would be just east of the half mile. This green space here is actually identified as wetlands, that's where we're staying out of it. So, we would expect, you know, the logical place for the next street would be one row of lots to the east of that, and would maintain about that quarter mile spacing on the Van Dorn. As Bob mentioned, they've been working on the grade study. I haven't seen it yet, I know they sent me a link to it, but I couldn't access it. So, once we get that, we will evaluate what, what kind of impacts that has on, on our initial design, so. Otherwise, I think staff has addressed most of what I was going to talk about. Oh, I guess one thing in terms of a, a lot of opinions, in terms of density and, and where particular lots would be, I just want to point out that, so the heavier density lots that we're showing are backing onto the arterial. The bigger lots that we have here are backing on to some of the acreage lots here. These lots up here are kind of mid-range, sorry?
I have to zoom out again? Uh huh, next.
These up, that back onto the MOPAC are kind of mid-range lots. In fact, the product that the developer is contemplating using up here would be geared toward 55-plus retirees type of a product, a good-sized unit, not a lot of lawn type of unit, so not small houses per se. Again, we're leaving the green space there. The grading design would, would somewhat enhance that berm that Steve talked about that separates the, the MOPAC from this property already. And then, this, this area, the gentleman that was on Zoom, that's currently ag land, that is not a, a acreage lot. There are acreages on the north, and we currently do have some, some higher-density bedding in the, to that area, but... Like I said, I think everything else was really addressed by staff.
Dennis?
Oh, just going back, Rick. Bob, I think, mentioned a couple times, their preference on Van Dorn would, to do a roundabout, is that your intention and preference as well? In terms of when you get into that design, is that what you envisioned for that south entrance to the development?
That is our intention at this point. A lot of it comes down to crunching numbers in terms of what we can generate for impact fees, and what the cost of that roundabout might be. The grade study will dictate some of that in terms of how much of the existing asphalt we have to replace in order to meet the new grade, you know, vertical alignment.
Okay.
How long would it be until you're ready to start constructing that roundabout?
The goal would be to start moving dirt next spring, and so we would probably be looking to start that roundabout next year.
I want to make sure that I'm looking at this properly. So, for Phase Four, you don't, the developer doesn't own all of that property for Phase Four currently?
The developer currently has options on, on everything within the bounds of the plot.
Okay. Did you guys hold a neighborhood meeting?
We did, and I guess that was one of the other things. And we do apologize to the neighbors, as it is the nature of the times. The night that we had the first meeting scheduled, we had several in the development team that were testing positive for COVID, so we had to postpone that meeting. And then, unfortunately, didn't have a, a good mechanism to get ahold of folks in a matter of a few hours to let them know that it was not going to happen that night. So we did reschedule, had a fairly good showing when we did reschedule.
Do you feel that you have resolved a lot of the concerns that you heard from the neighbors at that meeting?
I think a lot of the concerns are really just in regards to the change of the...
More like, like the density?
Yeah, change in density, and, and, you know, from a, what is an acreage development into what is going to be an urbanized development. And, you know, that's a difficult thing to deal with as we move into these fringes of the city, we run into this a lot. And that is why currently there's a moratorium on acreage development within three-mile limit.
I'm still having problems with this map, I'm sorry. So is Phase Four in the current annexation?
Phase Four is not part of the current annexation.
Okay.
It's just One, Two, and Three.
That's what I thought, but I wanted to make sure. Okay.
There was some discussion about issues of flooding in the area up closer to the MOPAC trail, but that, it doesn't appear that that's in a floodplain. Has, that's been evaluated recently with regard to floodplain issues?
We have the, the flood model that was used to develop the FEMA floodplain, and we have made some modifications to that based on the changes that, that we're proposing. And one of, the biggest change, or biggest impact to that would be the, the trail crossing of the channel. That is projected to create a slight rise, but it would be mitigated within a few hundred feet, and we would raise the lots accordingly, that, about that portion of the channel. Yeah, I don't believe, the, the area along the MOPAC sits fairly high relative to, to the creek. The floodplain doesn't extend up there, it's, it's more down in the bottom.
Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you. entertain a motion.
I would move a closed public hearing, Bechius.
Second, Joy.
Okay, who moved that, I'm sorry?
Bechius.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Campbell?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Raymond Yost?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Bechius?
Yes.
Cor?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
I would then move approval of annexation 20014.
Second, Campbell. Second, Campbell.
Sorry, excuse me. I'll just speak to all of the annexation, change of zone, and special permit at the same time while we have it in front of us. You know, this is a difficult site to develop because of the waterway features inherent to it. I think, you know, new development often seems imperfect because it's not really a complete project. And so I think some of the things we've talked about here will come to fruition as urbanization of the area continues. Right now, we're just looking at a preliminary step of it. You know, and I think urbanization of the area is going to become the normal out here, of course. You know, I think that some of the information I've heard about the lot sizing, actually I think it's nicer to have larger lots abutting the acreages with smaller lots abutting the arterials. I enjoy the proposed easement that appears to be abutting the MOPAC trail. As Steve pointed out, we have just up the street, Hillcrest, crossing the MOPAC trail there too. And I think as urbanization continues, crossing of these trails is going to become more and more normal. So those things don't really concern me, and I'll support the project.
I seconded the project, and the main reason why is, as Tom said, it's a transition moving from urban to rural. And I think they've done a good job of trying to plan out with all the obstacles of the waterways and the creeks and all of that to fit a project in that still allowed the acreages around it to remain. And if I look at the property north of ours on 56th and Pine Lake Road, many of those acreages are already turning into townhomes as a transition. And eventually, that's going to happen to a lot of these acreages, some sooner than others. And so it's an evolution that these seem to go through, and I think this plan is an adequate start.
Dennis?
Okay, I hope you guys will understand where I'm coming from here because it's going to be kind of a weird vote for me. I agree with everything that both Tom and Dick said about urbanization in this area. It's going to happen, and I frankly think that the design effort to this point is generally good. I know that there's concerns about density and the adjacencies to the trail, open space, all those kinds of things, preservation of open space. I think generally, at this stage of design, there is care being taken to address that. There's a lot to be done yet. But I think the way that this plan tries to get to the urbanization transition, to me, is not, I don't want to say fraudulent, but a little bit shady. And I'm stuck on the annexation because we have an annexation that needs to trigger this, that there are things in the way, there are owners in the way, that don't want to participate in that, and they're not really getting anything. And staff can correct me if I'm wrong, but to annex but not improve 98th, not immediately improve utility facilitation, things like that, that doesn't seem right to me to get to the end point. So I think what I'm going to do, hopefully this makes sense to everybody, for me, anyway, at least knowing where I'm coming from, is I'm going to oppose the annexation. But this is weird, but I'm okay with a change of zone, and I'm okay with a special permit. So that's where I'm at. And I wish there was a way for the developer to figure this out with the adjacent landowners in a way that makes sense for everybody because it looks to me like there's a jump that's occurring here that I don't like. So that's where I'm at.
I'm kind of with you on that. Overall, this looks like a decent project. I do have a couple of concerns about it, but my main problem is I don't think it's right to annex people that don't want to be annexed just so that this project can occur. And I kind of have some qualms about that. So I am going to vote against the annexation. Kind of the concerns I have about the development is, and I should have asked, but I'm a little concerned about waiving the block lengths. I know that they're doing some, you know, putting in some trails and stuff, but that isn't related to the block lengths that we're allowing to be longer. And so I would like to see those related a little bit better because that's really about connectivity, and the connectivity isn't in those blocks. And I understand to the general public why it might seem weird that, you know, from a planning commission standpoint, we're used to seeing developments where we have the larger density on the exterior because those are people that are, I shouldn't say people, those are properties that usually they're not as desirable to live right next to a major street, and so we'll make those smaller units. But I can see from your standpoint, just the opposite is occurring where you want those to be the larger lots so that they blend in. But I did want to make that statement so you guys understand that's why it's designed this way. That's kind of the typical what we see. So I think, you know, I'm not crazy about the block length waiver, but to me, it's not a deal breaker. So I'll be kind of following Dennis's path and voting against the annexation, but I think the project overall is decent.
Go ahead.
Okay, awesome. I can see the, like Dennis almost said word-for-word what I was thinking, how precarious the annexation is, but it seems like from a historical standpoint, and maybe we can have a little more discussion, is that we've done this, unfortunately or fortunately, to other properties where we, because they are using roadways to get into town, to get out of town, those types of things, so they are seeing the benefits of the urbanization and the peripheral access to the city. But as a rural representative, this is something we deal with all the time in a challenging situation because of our urban density versus our ruralization and those types of things. So I'm very, it's a very hard position to be on, and I'm probably leaning to where Dick and Tom were coming from, and we'll probably be supporting all of the motions, and we can talk some more about that, but that's where I'm leaning from our historical
India or Tracy?
I plan to support all three, three of the matters that are in front of us. I, it does feel a bit like a patchwork with regard to the annexation, and I was, Dennis really articulated how that all fits together and what that tension is. That being said, we do do, you know, forced annexations in other contexts, and this doesn't feel that different to me. I think that there is a benefit that, and it certainly makes sense that this all is part of the same platform, same project. So I will be supporting all three.
Tracy?
Dick?
I just want to address two things. One, you were talking about the block lengths and connectivity, and I'm a big connectivity person. But with the depth and the width of the creeks and the floodplain and floodway, that creates some very significant costs to make more connections. So I was comfortable waiving the block lengths purely from a standpoint that it's very difficult to create more connectivity than what they're already doing. And then as far as the acreages and the farmland being annexed, that's happened all in every quadrant of the city. And for urban development to move through, in some cases, it's necessary. And so this actually has less properties that would remain out of the annexation if they could than many of the developments that come before us. I do know that down by us, that they all have access to city water now, and if their septic systems fail, then they've got to hook up to the city sewers, sanitary sewers. But they're welcome to stay on their septic systems as long as they perform.
And I'll just add too, as the city provides mechanisms for urbanization, the land needs to be urbanized. That is part of the process, and that's the process that we're seeing in front of us today. You're right, absolutely. Commissioner Campbell?
I think we're ready for a vote.
Okay, this is for the conditional approval of annexation 20014. Campbell?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Reiman Yost?
Yes.
Shear?
No.
Bechius?
Yes.
Cor?
No.
Motion carried five to two.
I'll move approval of change of zone 20038. Bechius?
Second, Campbell.
Any further discussion?
No.
Okay, Jerry?
Okay, this is for the conditional approval of change of zone 20038. Campbell?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Reiman Yost?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Bechius?
Yes.
Cor?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
I'll move approval of special permit 20047. Bechius?
Second, Edgerton. Jerry?
Okay, this is for conditional approval of special permit 20047. Again, this is final action on this item unless appealed to the city council within 14 days. Campbell?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Reiman Yost?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Bechius?
Yes.
Cor?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Please note that we are suspending the opportunity for anyone wishing to speak on an item not on the agenda until further notice, and I would call for a motion.
Move to adjourn. Campbell?
Second, Joy.
Jerry?
Okay. Campbell?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Reiman Yost?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Bechius?
Yes.
Cor?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
We're now adjourned.